Good evening, everybody. This is the Select Board meeting Monday, December 2, 2019, 7:15 p.m. I am the Chair, Diane Mahan. To my right, your left.
John Hurd.
Joe Kuro.
Dan Dunn.
Steve DeCoursey.
Adam Chaplin, Town Manager.
Doug Heim, Town Counsel.
Marie, Publica Board Administrator.
Thank you so much. I do want to take one agenda item out of order because I know there's another commitment that this person has. So with my colleague's permission, I'd like to go to Agenda Item Number 11. It's an appointment for Board of Trust Fund Commissioners, Arif Padaria. Is Arif here? You can pull that down, too. You just wanted to say your name and just give a brief...
What would you like? I'm Arif Padaria. I live in Arlington. Not quite sure what you'd like to know, but if there are any specific questions, I'm happy to answer.
Either your prior involvement on the Trust Fund Committee, what it is you'd like to bring, you know, why you're willing to serve.
Sure. So why don't I give you a bit of my background and perhaps why I applied for this post? I previously was on the Arlington Finance Committee for a bit, about maybe a couple of years. I've lived in town since November of 2007. I live in East Arlington. And I wanted to be involved in Arlington, per se, and that's why I also was part of the Arlington Finance Committee. I just exchanged emails today about rejoining the Arlington Finance Committee as well, all on a volunteer basis. By way of background, I'm a computer scientist and I build companies. I've also got an MBA in finance degrees. I've been a Wall Street banker and a venture capitalist for 20 years. I've invested in over 200 companies and actively managed and ran over 10 companies. I'm currently building a 3D printing company. I figured when I saw this posting, and I wrote to Adam, who I've known for several years now, that what my involvement might be, and given my background and how I might be able to serve, given the finance background, given the tech background, given everything else in my involvement in town. So that's really the reason I'm here and sort of why I applied for this post, to be able to give back to my community. Couple of notes, I guess I did also give back to the state of Massachusetts by way of building the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center for Duval Patrick at the time, who nominated me to help build that investment fund. So this is part of an ongoing exercise for me.
Oh, I'm tired. Thank you so much. And Mr. Chaplin speaks very highly of you. Is there a motion?
Move or approval.
By Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further questions or comments, Mr. Dunn?
Just thank you very much for volunteering. I know exactly the motivation you're talking about, and we really appreciate it. It makes the town work.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
We'll now go back to the agenda. Number one, presentation by our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, members of the Board. Mike Rautemacher, Public Works Director. I'd like to just take just a few minutes to present to you the recent results from some drinking water sampling we did as a requirement of the DEP and the MWRA. Once a year, the town is required to choose 15 homes that are greater at risk because of their age and the year of construction for potential lead and copper presence. And this is something we do every year. We take the resident takes the sample, we bring it to the lab, it's analyzed, and then we report the results back to the DEP, MWRA, and the community as a whole. This year, unfortunately, two of the samples we took had results above the DEP's allowable action limit for lead. The action limit level is 15 parts per billion, and we had two samples. One was at 17 and one was at 18. So not earth-shattering, but still exceeded the action level. So what this requires us now to do is to have an education program to the community to let them know that what we found and the presence of lead in these two samples. What was interesting is that we selected these homes based on, like I say, the age and the possible presence of a lead service line. Arlington does not have, as far as we know in our records, many. And this was one historically that could have had it. And when we got the results, we went actually and dug up the line in the street, and it was, in fact, copper. So the problem is in the house itself. So even though Arlington's infrastructure was not the cause, it is still quite, it's a good idea to bring this, to focus attention because it highlights the fact that the problem can be in your own house and not necessarily in the, under your front lawn or in the street. So essentially, what this is going to require is that by the end of December, we send out a letter. You might have a sample in your packet of the information. There's a brochure that'll be mailed out to all households, and then we will send another targeted mailing to schools and pediatricians and populations at risk, younger, you know, possible populations. We'll send that information out. We will put some information with the water bill on a quarterly basis. And also, we're going to be reaching out, we're going to scour our records once again. We recently digitized them, so it's easier to go through them. And we found a handful of historic data where there might be some homes that have lead service. They may have been replaced, but our records indicate they still might be lead. And we're going to reach out to those homes to let them know, to see if they want to have their water tested. Of those 15 homes, there were some that were lead, but their action level came in far below. So it's a hit or miss sometimes. The MWRA does put a chemical in the water to prevent or to reduce lead from leaching into the water. But if its presence is great enough, like in this one house, it can still find its way. So, like I say, we'll be starting this education program, we'll be doing some outreach, we'll be contacting homes. And if residents are concerned, we will do water testing at their request as well. It's often, if you do have it in your home, it's often as simple as letting your water run for a minute or two to flush that out before you start using water for the day until you can get your water line or your plumbing repaired. So these are all the things that we'll be, we'll be reaching out, letting residents and customers know.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move or receipt?
Move or receipt by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Hurd, did you have a question?
I just have one question about the outreach through the packet. See, when you say you're mailing it to residents, and that was, the part you say you're mailing it was part of the water bill?
So we're going to send out a separate mailing to all households, aside, separate from the water bill. That has the pamphlet.
So that would reach tenants as well?
It's going to go to every, we're doing, we're required to send it to all bill-paying customers, but we're going to actually just send it to all households, like, you know, permit mail, you know, like every mailbox will get one.
Yeah. Yeah, that was my only question, because it said to the bill payers.
Mr. Dunn.
So I can't remember us having this kind of, this positive detection before.
It has never, in my tenure, come up. Again, I think it's hit or miss. Like I say, the pipe wasn't in the street, it was in the plumbing. And actually, in this one particular house, a lot of the plumbing had been replaced. So it could have, it could be in the fixture, certain fixtures up until 1980 had the potential for lead or lead results like this. So, yeah, we haven't had it in the past.
Okay. And so with these two, were you able to, did the households figure out exactly where it's coming from, or they still don't know?
No. The one that had the copper lines, we explained that the problem wasn't in the street, and it was likely in the house, and that they contacted a plumber. And the other home, it was copper in the street. We couldn't see on the property itself, but there's indication that it still might be a lead service line in the yard. We talked to the homeowner. They knew, and they didn't have the money to replace it, and they would have been flushing the water, and they've been dealing with it on their own. But now that it's, now that we've sampled there and that we have a high result, we will probably get involved and try to assist that resident in getting that replaced.
Thank you.
Just to sort of case in point, you go out, it's detected, the homeowner is informed. It's pretty costly. They want to do it and they can't. Are there any programs in Arlington, whether it's like weatherization or something else, that we can direct them to? Not tell them they're going to get it, but say, we know this is a kind of a big hit from talking to you, or?
We're going to, so where, part of the requirements is until our results drop back below that, so the next time we sample, if we're below the actual limit, we're off the hook. I think we'll still continue some kind of educational reach. But until we reach that limit, we're required to assist residents, 7% of identified lead lines, required to remove or replace 7% of those. So in order to help residents who have this situation, we're going to be working in the next month or two to come up with some kind of financial assistance.
Oh, good.
It's a pretty low number that we're aware of. It's maybe 40 houses that we have not yet been able to get into to verify that they are no longer lead services. So I'm assuming that's even going to be less once we get in the houses, because over time, people have replaced with copper and whatnot. So I don't think it's going to be a huge task to reach out to these households and help them.
And then just, just to comment, it's no biggie or anything like that, reading everything, I really like that you, at the end of the letter going out, you have an English and then several other languages that says, "This is an important notice. Please have someone translate," words to that effect. Not to be like a stickler or anything, but unless, I see the, because I know a lot of people, when they look at stuff, especially if it's not their language, bold really does jump out. Unless there's a cultural or ethnic and/or they're already printed, so maybe the next one, like the first two languages are bolded, and then the next two, three translations aren't. Now, I don't know if that's the nature of, that if you bold a certain language, it's a disrespectful thing to do.
Yeah.
It's no biggie. I just, you know, I think it's good.
We can, this time to correct it if we can.
Okay. Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a couple of questions on the two houses. Was there any resampling done?
We did, actually. We resampled both of them, and the one household that had the copper line fell way below the limit on the second sample. And the house where we have not yet verified the portion of the line on private property, that came just a hair over the acceptable limit.
Okay.
So, but those samples are not considered in having the reporting requirements. Your first sample is the one that you go by.
Sure. Okay. And then on, I noticed that there was a letter to DEP, and I think they probably got in touch with you as well. Are they satisfied with the steps that you're taking?
Correct. They've signed off on this approach.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn?
Sorry. Yeah, go on a second round. That's okay, Mr. Kuro. Sorry. Just got me really thinking on this. So you said that you selected the 15 based on likelihood to be a problem. Do you think that, and you also said that some of the records got like digitized and updated. Does that mean that, like, maybe we pulled some new people into the test pool and that maybe?
That was part of the, yeah. In the most recent round, we were able to further refine the pool that we selected from.
So we just, so we could have just really narrowed it down and really...
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Mr. Kuro?
Thank you. Thank you for this. I appreciate that we're helping the residents who are, the elevated levels were identified. This question may not be for you. It actually might be my colleague knows this better, but the fact that we've identified the lead, the elevated lead levels there, does that then become a required disclosure for those homeowners when they go to sell their properties?
I don't know that.
Don't give advice.
Don't give advice.
They always tell lawyers not to give advice in public.
No, that's what I'm saying. That's, I work for a lot of attorneys.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just curious, so I think it is important that we try to help folks, just because I could just find some things while I'm down the road.
I think that probably will be defined where this is kind of, you know, this is a new process in terms of, not a new process in terms of testing, but a new process in terms of how you tested it, Mr. Dunn's comments, maybe that's why we got two really high hits, because it's a different process you're doing, as well as you're going to be discussing and put in place, you know, if we can give relief to homeowners. So maybe that could be another question in terms of, just so the board's edification. Is that something that when you're talking about it, that yes, you've got to let the homeowner know that needs to be disclosed, or maybe not?
Okay.
And I'd bug Attorney Heim, but no, I'm not going to ask him tonight, because I didn't ask him to look into it. Any further, did I cut you off, Mr. Kuro?
Nope.
No? Any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion, move or receipt by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to everyone down the yard. Be safe.
Yes.
Thanks.
Again, with my colleague's permission, we have a public hearing. Agenda Item 10 scheduled for 7:30 p.m. It is 7:31. Vote MWRA debt shift. Ms. Winston, you can introduce yourself and bring that microphone down. When you follow Mr. Rautemacher, that's what you have to do.
Good evening, Madam Chair, all members of the Board, Mr. Town Manager. We're here for our annual hearing required by statute with respect to the Board's decision as to whether there should be classification in the town of Arlington. Before Mr. Tierney goes through the pamphlet, the booklet that was provided to you with all the relevant data, and we did receive approval from DOR just this afternoon, that's why you just got it, Mr. Tierney is here, the Director of Assessment, Mr. Fielding from the Board, and Dana Mann, who's a data controller in the Board of Assessors' Office. I'd just like to go over a couple of things. Page five, and I reminded Mr. Tierney that last year you asked us to number the pages. We will, we promise you. On page five, we have the information as to what would happen if there was classification and the shift. So that you know, fiscal year values in 2020 have risen again substantially. Single-family homes went up nine point, no, page five is the...
What does it say at the top? Residential exemption or something else?
Page four.
Page four, that? Okay. I counted the first page as page one. Okay.
Singles went up 9.71%. Condos went up 10 and 1/2%. Twos and threes went up approximately 9%, respectively. The very last page, and so that you know, we posted the values for public disclosure on November 18th to 22nd. The very last page of this, I think, is really important, and I think it's important for taxpayers to know that if you look, and we don't have the tax rates for fiscal 2020 for Belmont, Winchester, and Lexington, but we would expect that they would go up comparable as Arlington's have. If you look at Arlington's tax rate compared to these three other towns, I think the town is doing a great job. I think the town is well-run. The infrastructure is well-maintained. We have good school systems and green spaces, and we're substantially below the neighboring communities. So I think that's important for people to understand, that Arlington is doing a good job of trying to maintain costs and expenses while providing people with the high quality of life here. So I think that's a pretty illustrative of situation.
Just on that, for everyone at home who doesn't have the book yet, could I just...
Sure.
Maybe for 2019, read Arlington, Belmont?
Sure. In 2019, and this, so that you know, these taxes are on a value of $821,000, which is the average single-family home value for 2020. In 2019, the taxes were $8,462. Belmont, same value, $12,720. Winchester, same value, $13,082. And Lexington, which I'm fairly certain has classification, is $14,876 on the same value. Those are significant differences when you look at the quality of life we have here in town, which I think is great. I mean, that's my infomercial from the Board of Assessors.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
What did you say the average was again, sorry, for this year? The average house size, house value?
Eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, single.
Thank you.
If I could introduce, if you have any questions for me, I'll introduce Mr. Tierney. Paul?
Good evening, Board. I would just like to mention two of my office workers, Mary McMakin and Jennifer O'Rourke, do a lot of work behind the scenes. They're very helpful. And obviously, I'd like to mention Bob Greeley, who cannot make it here tonight. So we'll start. Page two. To start off, to calculate FY '20 levy limit, we start with the nine, FY '19 levy limit at 2 and 1/2% of underprop, 2 and 1/2. We add in new growth of $816,617. And then we add in the 2020 override, which is $5,500,000. That'll give us our FY '20 levy limit. So we add in the school debt exclusion, the water and sewer debt, to give us a total of $133,376,594. That's the maximum that we have to raise. The town did raise $133,350,155. We define that by the total taxable assessed value in town to give us a proposed tax rate for FY '20 of $11.06. Turn the page. This gives us our residential factor computation. This will give us the numbers we need to explain the residential shift if we're going to go to a commercial rate. So if we just turn to page five, where the chart is on... So if we take a 5% shift from the residential to commercial, the average commercial, industrial, personal property taxes will go up $276, and the residential will see a savings of $15.93. So if we take that maximum shift and go to 150%, the commercial, industrial, personal property taxes will rise $2,765, and the residential will see a savings of $159.29. Turn the page, the residential exemption. So it's not many communities in Massachusetts that have the residential exemption. They're usually in towns where there's a lot of vacation homes or apartments. Just a few of Boston, Cambridge, Chelsea, and Brookline do have the residential exemption. If we adopted a 20% residential exemption, the tax rate would be, would rise from $11.06 to $13.50. The break-even point, so no one would see a difference in their taxes, would be $873,426. We have approximately 17% of the homes that would see an increase in their taxes through no fault of their own. So I have a little chart up there to just show you. If we adopted a 5% residential exemption, the new tax rate would be $11.58. If we adopted a 10%, it would be $12.16, and 15% would be $12.80. The next page just shows the historical tax rates in town. The next page is the LA 4. It's the number of parcels for each class of property and their corresponding assessed values in total. Turn the page. This is our growth page and abatements. As you can see, if you look in the lower right-hand column, our growth for the year was $816,617.
Where was that?
On the right.
Lower right.
In the middle.
Oh, thank you.
Next page. So we have the year-over-year fiscal '20 versus fiscal '19 comparison. As Mary spoke of earlier, single families went up 9.71%, condos 10.5%. You can read all the values, all the way down the column.
I have a question, that's just, if I may.
Sure.
Does, and if it does, where the UGAR property lie in here? Is that under open space commercial, or are they in there? Are they on the tax roll?
Yes, they are. It's on the land, yeah.
So they're in here some?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. The next page is just our pie chart to see where the tax burden is going. As you can see, it's mostly on the property taxes. The next page, the tax rate components. It's just a breakdown of exactly where all the, how we calculate the tax rate in total against the levy, 2 and 1/2%. Our growth, the override, water and debt exclusion, and the school debt exclusion all contribute to the tax rate, and that's their corresponding amounts. Below that is the copy over from the first page, the levy, 2 and 1/2% growth, maximum levy. The levy increased this year 7.46%. As we go down the page a little further, we do have the average assessed single family as well as the average single-family taxes. They are now $9,126.
And then the last page. This is Winston Stanley O'Connor just went over.
Last page is just a chart. I will have, I will have these, sorry.
I know, I'm looking at the 2016 assessed single family at $585,000, and four years later, we're at $825,000. So I know where my husband, his pain comes from the past few years. He's been opening his tax bill.
It's been an aggressive market.
First, is there a motion? Our questions first. Mr. Dunn?
So I don't know who the right person to answer this is, but on the water sewer, is, did we talk about lowering that component for this? I thought the plan that we had voted was going to lower the component for this year? Did I misremember?
We talked about needing to adjust rates sometime soon, early, late winter, early spring, to then make an adjustment next December.
Because we're not actually paying this year?
When the first tranche of big high school debt rolls on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or a motion to, Mr. Kuro?
I just have one question. I noticed that under all of the real estate categories, that there's only one that's decreased in assessed value, which is residential land. That's undeveloped land, is it?
Yes. Yes.
Does that tend to be kind of a leading indicator that there might be downward pressure on other real estate components?
I would have to, I'm not sure. I'd have to really look into that before I answer that.
Is that typically, I don't remember. Does that typically?
Some of these lots...
Because everything else, I've, you know, this is consistent with what we've seen.
Those guys make you lots that don't conform to some...
And now they're on buildable.
Now they're on buildable.
Yeah.
An account was a little higher last year for fiscal '19 versus fiscal '20.
Yeah.
You sell, you sell four lots for 500 grand each, and that's...
There you go. Okay. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience? If not, a motion by one of my colleagues to set the property tax classification tax rate.
Move approval of, what do you call it, zero adjustment?
Is it?
Factor of one.
Sorry. Factor of one.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dunn, changed your first name, seconded by Mr. Hurd, to vote and set the property tax classification tax rate at a factor of one?
Yes. Single tax rate, yes.
For the tax rate. Any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion to approve by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
If we just have the Board sign the LA 5, please.
Do we have a separate vote that we have to take on the debt shift?
Correct.
It's listed on the agenda, I think.
Okay.
To approve it again?
Yes.
Adam, what, or Doug, or what's the form of that motion?
Just affirmatively setting the MWRA debt shift at $5,593,112.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Dunn. Any further public comment, any questions, comments from my colleagues? If not, on a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Dunn, to vote the MWRA debt shift, 5.5 million, et cetera. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much. Then we will now go to our consent agenda. Thank you so much. Minister of Meetings, November 18, 2019. For approval, change of manager, alcohol license, Doug Jembis. Not your average Joe's. Reappointments, Transportation Advisory Committee, Melissa Labey. Scott Smith, reappointment, Arlington Cultural Council. Kimberly Harding for approval, cause and event, Arlington 2025 K Race on 5/31/20. For approval, two sandwich boards for Sacoma Foundation of America's Acapella Festival to belt out cancer from January 10. to belt out cancer from January tenth through the twenty-fourth. Request special one-day beer and wine license, twelve fourteen nineteen, Robbins Library Reading Room for a private event. Request free parking for local holiday shopping. First is our motion to approve.
Move approval, subject to our conditions set forth.
Mr. Carroll, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Dunn, Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, if, if the board would agree, I'd like to just update the, make one minor change to the minutes. In section fourteen, they're talking about the policy of the changing of the orders of the article in town meeting. My, the intent, the intent of my motion was not just to set the order, but also to say that the discretion still is with, with the board's office. And so I just wanted the, I didn't want the motion to be misread, that that was an absolute order and that there was still discretion. And so if, if it's okay, I'd like to update the, say, that the, the general order of the articles for the twenty-two day town meeting weren't with discretion still held by the, by the office, which is, I think, what I was.
By the select board office.
Yeah, and there's something I think we discussed at the meeting, but I wanted to, it to be captured in the minutes.
Yeah, and it's cleared and spelled out. Is that okay, Mrs. Kropelka?
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone here for those agenda items? Mr. Carroll, will you take that as part of your motion to amend the minutes?
I will, yes.
Okay, friendly amendment. Any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Dunn, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, unanimous vote. Request, agenda item twelve, request Tango Restaurant Late Night Event, twelve thirty-one nineteen to one one twenty. Mrs. Kropelka, have they done this before?
Yes.
Okay, because normally we like to see them in here. My, mine went blank, so since they've done it before, we know, okay. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
By Mr. Hurd, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Carroll. Any questions or comments? If not, on a motion, move approval by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Carroll, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, unanimous vote. Citizens Open Forum, then I'll read the preamble real quick, sorry, come right up. Except, except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should also be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. Just your name.
Hi, Beth Malachek, Russell Street, and I am a town meeting member. I made a special effort to get here tonight without slipping or falling because I was afraid you wouldn't have anybody, so I'm really happy to be Jane Q. Public tonight. If ACMI would be so kind as to show that I'm the only one in the audience, I would appreciate that. So I'm here to remind the select board about the importance of not mistaking force and the use of force for leadership and the past deployment of police at public meetings, apparently to inhibit remarks. This remains a concern of mine. The select board has yet to acknowledge this past practice or to say whether or not it's a standard operating procedure. I hope that at some point that would happen. I refer, of course, to the FOIA documents, the email from a former colleague of yours, a select board member. It's now posted on the internet where this select board member at the time is writing to the town manager encouraging the deployment of police at public meetings. Again, I think that inhibits democracy rather than protecting it. Otherwise, I'm here because I am interested in what the town manager is going to have to say about the community development block grants, but my remarks come before that. So I will only say that there are many of us in town who are very concerned about the need for an expansion of affordable housing, higher earmarks for affordable housing, the inclusion of potential ownership opportunities for low and moderate income people, and whether the diversity task force group will be included in that list of groups that you enumerate for, I believe HUD, in the documents posted online. There is some interest in having the diversity task force group included. I remain concerned, as do others, by a lack of transparency. Perhaps it's an appearance of the lack of transparency in this town hall administration that includes how public remarks are noted in the minutes as well as whether or not everything is posted, both those testimonies that are sent in an email and handed over in these chambers. I would like to know whether all of the public testimony given since September on the issue, on the racism issues that have been discussed in this chamber, have they all been posted? Are they all electronically available? Because we'd like them to be. I am concerned about the format for public forums, as evidenced at the January tenth housing forum, also recently as the Broadway Plaza redo. The plan was not presented to the public with an opportunity for questions, rather the public is required to go around to four or five stations and ask their questions. I'm not an architect, I'm not a town planner, I don't know how to read those things. I see green colored things that are trees. I see a photograph of a bench, I remark and how nice it looks, and I'm told, oh, that's just there for a depiction, we're not actually using that bench. That seems unhelpful at best. So Broadway Plaza, I remain concerned about the tree canopy. I wonder if you have included in the plan addressing the heat islands that are adjacent at Russell Parking. And I am, of course, concerned with preserving Veterans Memorial Park where it is, right next to the fire department, so that those people who have made the ultimate sacrifice are there where we can see them memorialized, you know, anytime we're driving by or walking by. I remain concerned that one of the original plans for the Broadway Plaza redo included moving Veterans Park to Cooks Hollow. I'm a user of Cooks Hollow, it's my neighborhood park. Thanks to the benign neglect of DPW or the select board, I don't know who does not do maintenance there, we have three broken benches, we would like them fixed, they've been broken for going on five years now, it needs lumber, screws, and elbow grease. We don't need an MAPC plan or anybody else's plan, we just would like the benches replaced.
Okay, thank you. And I gave you a little over four minutes because you were so nice to come down. I feel so bad. I want everyone to note that she came through this weather and she's here tonight, so.
I'm really, I'm really.
And I, just because I have to say in accordance with what Citizens Open Forum is.
I understand.
In terms of your questions, I would anticipate if you called the select board office, the answer would be yes, all those have been posted.
Thank you.
But please get that officially, I'm just telling you that. And I know that the manager and myself, on behalf of the board, would definitely follow up on all those suggestions and hopefully get some answers, either through the processes that we have, we have the hearings, or whether there's a piece of correspondence or something that addresses that, I'll be sure that you get a copy of that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Get home safely. I'm not telling you have to leave now, I'm just saying, when you do go, go safely. Thank you. Citizens Open Forum is closed. We'll now go to traffic rules and orders, agenda item thirteen, Mr. Chapter Lane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this agenda item is requesting that the board formally adopt an updated citizen participation plan for the town CDBG program. So a citizen participation plan is something that's required for any HUD entitlement community, which Arlington is. So it's through that HUD entitlement that we receive CDBG funding. We've had a plan for many years, but the plan hasn't been updated since the mid nineties. The Department of Planning and Community Development, upon receiving some recommendations from the North Suburban Consortium that we're a part of, for some updates that we need to make to maintain conformance with statute, took that as the initiative to make those updates to conform with statute, as well as making further revisions to conform more closely with what our communications policy says today about how we engage and communicate with the public. So Jenny Rate, working with first Julie Wayman, and now Brian Nichols, who's taken Julie's place and who will bring, I think, to the next board meeting to meet the board, have put together this plan. It's added in things such as focus groups and surveys, working with the groups of residents who are most directly impacted by CDBG funding. These things have actually already been done over the past year, so we've been putting this plan into action, but need it to be formally adopted by the select board. I know Ms. Malachek just mentioned the addition of the diversity task group to the list of groups that we'll reach out to. The two groups that are mentioned are the Arlington Human Rights Commission and the Disability Commission. I see no issue with adding the diversity task group if the board would like to propose that amendment tonight. But otherwise, I think this, this document reflects the process, again, that we're already undertaking. It's not specifically called out in this document, but I think the board recalls that we have, for a number of years, had a subcommittee, publicly posted subcommittee that meets and goes over all of the funding requests that are made by the various groups across town. Last year, for the first time, added three citizens to that group to expand participation and engagement with the public on trying to make sure that we were funding what we should be funding via CDBG. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have and would ask for your favorable
I, I will say, having returned to the CDBG subcommittee, I really found the three citizens who joined the group really helped the process.
I agree.
And I really was impressed by, they literally had gone through every single proposal, and when we were going through the guidelines in terms of what rating we give a particular service, what its use, its need is, every time I sort of was at an impasse, they pretty much remediated all that and said, well, I gave it this number under the guideline because this is how, when I read the proposal, this was the benefit, or maybe this wasn't the benefit, so it went down a point. And it really streamlined the process. I mean, we got it done in two, two meetings, and I think the second meeting was not the full two hours we had put aside, so I'm very thankful for that, and I know we'll continue with that in the future, so. I just wanted to let my colleagues know that the three citizens were really right up to speed on everything and took it as seriously, the import that they should, so. And I was really impressed with that because I'm like, oh, my gosh, they really did read everything. So first, we have to formalize kind of a process we're already doing, but we want to call it out because of HUD and CAEPER and all that other thing.
By, by the board adopting this, we could formally state to HUD that this is our updated citizen participation plan.
Okay, is there a motion to move approval to adopt the CDBG, the Town of Arlington Citizen Participation Plan, by?
I, I, I move approval with the suggested amendment of adding the diversity task group as one of the groups.
Human rights.
To which outreach will be made. I think these are, they're called out under number three, A three.
Mm-hmm.
So adding to A three, the diversity task group is one of the organizations.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. De Corsi. Any further questions, comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. Setting our future board meetings. There we go. We're going to aim for January till March, and then we have the obligatory first Monday in April organizational meeting, first Monday in April after the local election. And Mr. Chapter Lane?
And we, both the select board and the redevelopment board have talked about having a joint meeting. If we could add on, talking about what nights might be good for that, or, or any, any calendar time might be good for that meeting, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, so our last meeting in December is the sixteenth, so how does six and twenty look?
At least no good because that's MLK.
Oh, it is, okay. I don't have the calendar, I have my phone calendar.
I mean, six, I'm totally on board with.
Okay. Six and twenty-seven? And we can always add another meeting if we need it? But we shouldn't. Usually it's when we get into the warrant article hearings, but.
When is the warrant close, right?
All right, so six and twenty.
Thirty-first.
And twenty-seven? And the warrant closes on the thirty-first?
Yes.
So that works well in case the board needs to act on any warrant articles to place in the warrant.
Does that mean that we could make the fourteenth, or sorry, the thirteenth as a potential ARB?
Yeah. Well, how do people look on the thirteenth? All right, how about the thirteenth?
I'm just, Madam Chair, I'm totally open to other ideas, I'm just trying to figure out a list of dates that we can provide.
A list would be great, and then we can share that with the, the ARB.
Are we looking for a list of dates ARB to be Monday night, since we both meet on Mondays?
I mean, I think whatever the board feels like its availability is, they, I, my understanding is they're willing to be flexible on night of the week, if this board is as well.
Well, is there any other night in January that looks good to someone? That isn't a Monday? Like, how many days, is two enough?
Two or three is fine, yeah.
Okay. All right, how about the week of the thirteenth? Is there any night, Monday through Thursday, that's a problem for anyone, that is a conflict for anyone on this board?
Thursdays.
Thursdays.
I'm going to the library trustees on the Tuesday.
You have that?
Yeah, I'm going to the library trustees on that Tuesday evening.
All right, so we'll say third, how about fifteen? Thirteen and fifteen in January for a possible ARB meeting? And then what about the twenty-second or twenty-ninth in January? If this happens, I'd like to get it done in January. Does anyone have a?
Twenty-second, I would be.
No, that's fine.
So, oh.
Or if you want to say a different night in January, so we can give them three dates.
Oh, no, I take it back, twenty-second works. I apologize, yeah.
I'm actually going to be, I'm asking for a lot of your time, asking for some of your time on the twenty-second for the race equity and leadership training that the National League of Cities is going to do, so if we can, if we can actually hold some time on that day as well.
That evening or during the day?
Maybe late afternoon into evening.
Twenty-ninth?
Twenty-two.
No, we're trying to find. All right, how about thirteen, fifteen, twenty-nine?
That's good.
Is that good?
Yeah, so just, I didn't get a chance, so twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth are both maybe for me, but I think it's just, I don't, I think those are the right dates, it's just a matter of how it'll work.
And just let them know order preference for the board is probably thirteen, fifteen. Twenty-nine is the least preferential. Okay, so we're meeting on the twenty-seventh in January. What say my colleagues for February?
The tenth and the twenty-fourth?
When is?
The holidays, the seventeenth.
Seventeenth. The tenth and twenty-fourth are fine.
That's fine, okay.
Let's see, yeah, that's fine. School vacation will be that week of.
The sixteenth.
Of President's Day, I think, so, yep, yep.
Okay, and now March. We, our last meeting is February twenty-fourth, so March, nine twenty-three, or is that too soon? Well, we have to meet on the, oh, no, I'm thinking April, sorry. People talk about March, I apologize.
Nine twenty-three.
Nine twenty-three, does that work?
Yeah. Well, before we set the twenty-three, what's going to be our print date and all that for town meeting?
I would probably say it would be the week of the twenty-third, but it might be the nineteenth.
Madam Chair?
If we don't have a special town meeting, we only have to do it seven days before, but if we do the special town meeting, it has to be a fourteen day, so.
Any, yes, a special town meeting during town meeting? Turner Heim?
Probably, yeah.
So that's, I think, probably the week before, but you know what? I'll let you know, I'll figure it out tomorrow on the calendar.
So are we setting right now, I mean, we can always add or, or change if we have to, so am I hearing nine twenty-three or no? Or am I hearing?
You can still have a meeting on the twenty-third if you want, and.
Okay, so nine and twenty-three in March. And then the first Monday after the local is the organizational meeting. But, so there we are, we're good on that to go, right, Mrs.?
What's that date?
Assuming it's going to be April sixth? When's our local election this year? I don't even know.
April fourth.
It is the fourth, so it would be the sixth.
We should set that one too, just.
Okay, so we'll set this April sixth also as our first meeting in April.
Counsel has.
Turner Heim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Just as a forecast for the board, I expect a large warrant again this year, based on some early conversations that residents have initiated, along with some things that are sort of our standard slate of articles and things that we might anticipate, so we'll, one thing to keep an eye out for is how much will be pressed for in terms of warrant article hearings. I expect it to be as large as last year, if not, if not larger. So just for the chair's information and the rest of the board, these dates will be quite, quite full.
And maybe what we could do is, once the warrant closes, just sort of ballpark how many of the warrant articles will require select board hearings, how many we had last year, and that will kind of give me a guide about whether we need to have a conversation. year, and that will kind of give me a guide about whether we need to have a conversation about adding an additional Monday and/or additional Wednesday.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And whatever, since you're so entrenched with them, you may say, you know, this one may be kind of your, your whole night or not.
I, I also just want to give the board a sort of forecast that I expect that some of the warrant articles may be particularly lengthy discussions, or at least involve a lot of public engagement, as well as some articles are pretty large discussions if they actually end up getting filed. I've got at least one article, for example, that may be submitted that's about Proposition Three and a Half, increasing the town's ability to, giving the town flexibility to increase its levy limit above the two and a half percent. So if all those things coalesce together, it'll be a little bit like a nor'easter in terms of the volume of warrant discussions that we'll have and how intense some of them may be. So thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate that.
Appreciate letting us know what might be coming down.
Excuse me, Diane, I just want to remind, we, as, we haven't had a definite date yet, but I think we're going to have early voting for the five days from the 24th of February through the 28th, and if they want to do it on a Saturday, I'm willing to do it on a Saturday, so. But it certainly will be, it's definitely five days.
Hopefully, if we need heat at that point, we'll have heat. Mr. Chapdeline? No, okay. Take the heat from this room sometimes, man, the whole town hall. But anyways, okay, so right now, we're tentatively set with that, and we'll have further discussions. Mr. Chapdeline will get back to us on the three dates from the Redevelopment Board, and then after the warrant is closed, Attorney Heim will supply us all with, just like kind of a quick email, I'm not asking for a big, we're not asking for a big long thing, but just.
Of course.
And then I'll get some sense with Mr. Dunn, the town manager, and Attorney Heim, in terms of if we do need to discuss several of the dates, and we'll do that sooner rather than later, but not until after the warrant closes, January 31st, if that's okay. Great. Correspondence received, is there a move receipt?
So moved.
Mr. Carroll, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Hurd. Oh, the.
We have congratulations.
Yes.
To the town manager and.
Joan Roman, really.
Town Report Contest. Any further discussions and comments? If not, on a motion, move receipt by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. New business, Mrs. Kropelka?
Yeah.
Attorney Heim?
No new business.
Town Manager Chapdeline?
I'll say, echoing the thanks that the board gave to Mr. Radamaka at the start of the meeting, thanks to him and the DPW for the great work they did last night. I know people were very pleased to see the black roads, and I think a pretty, you know, all things considered, an easy morning considering the conditions. And also want to announce, this went out via an Arlington Alert and a town notice, but given tomorrow's forecast, we're going to put a parking ban in place until 10:00 a.m., as well as delaying town office and library openings until 10:00 a.m. If conditions warrant, we may push that out, but we figured that it's easier to push out than to pull back if conditions don't warrant that. I also, I probably shouldn't do this, but I will, just received a text from Kathy Bodie, Superintendent Bodie, saying the school would be canceled tomorrow as well, so I think we, we fared well in the first round of this storm, but the second round's looking a little more unforgiving, so.
And trash pickup?
Thank you. And trash pickup, this is actually the first time JRM reached out proactively to us to cancel trash pickup. Usually it's the other way around, but I'm guessing with what they dealt with today and foreseeing tomorrow. Delayed one day, so it'll, just like a holiday week starting on Tuesday, it'll be delayed one day for the rest of the week.
And I did have a brief conversation with the town manager. I got a lot of mostly electronical Facebook instant messages around streets sweeping in East Arlington, but I did ask the manager through GPW tonight, as well as tomorrow with the parking ban in effect, it's probably a total of 20 to 30 streets, 15 to 20 on each side of Magnolia and Thorne Dyke, especially with snow removal. If, for some reason, everybody doesn't really stay home, there's a lot of parking down there, just sort of come up with a plan for the next storm. In terms of, because I know years ago, Mr. Chapdeline was here and Mr. Sullivan was, when we were just getting hit by so many storms, and there was a dedicated, people had like two nights' notice, would go in curb to curb, and they had a pretty efficient operation with a police officer, a tow truck, DPW, but they did everything not to, I think they towed maybe four cars, that whole thing. But there's been a lot of concerns about, so I've, I've just asked the manager and Mr. Radamaka just to observe what it's like tomorrow. Hopefully, it's just a few errant cars here and there, so thank you. I cut you off on your new business.
Nope, I was done.
Mr. DeCorsey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to mention, the week before Thanksgiving, I participated in the food drive that the Board of Youth Services ran in connection with all the elementary schools, the Audison Middle School, and the Gibbs, and that was just a great effort by all of the schools coming together, students donated a lot of food, it was down at Arlington Eats. So that covered us through Thanksgiving. What I did also want to mention, and then sometimes you talk about this during, during food drives, we think about distributing food and collecting, and often the question comes up, what do you do the rest of the year? And one person I want to recognize tonight who makes a huge difference the rest of the year is Deanne Dupont. She was just recognized by the Patriots as a difference maker for her work at Food Link, and it just, really an appropriate time for, for that recognition. Their motto, as we all know, is rescue food, nourish our community, and they distribute food to 46 agencies in 15 communities, doing it all throughout the year. Deanne is going to be recognized at the last Patriots home game, and I just want to congratulate her for that.
Mr. Dunn?
The snow tomorrow has really crushed my dreams because tomorrow was my favorite day of the whole year, which is the Audit Committee, and unfortunately, we're not going to be able to meet tomorrow.
I actually was kind of sad about that. I had, I've had so much interesting information.
I've never met an auditor who is so excited about his reports before.
Any further new business?
No, that's it.
And we'll leave it to Mr. Chapdeline and his office to reschedule that. But I do like the early morning start. I think that works well for everyone. Mr. Hurd? Mr. Carroll?
I just had one, one thing I want to raise, we received some recent correspondence about the rapidly dilapidating home over by CVS. It's not the first time we've gotten correspondence from the church there, we've gotten correspondence from, from a number of folks. And I was wondering if it might be worth considering whether it's appropriate to have an agenda item at some point, to understand what tools are available to the town to address a situation like this. It's, it's gotten pretty bad, so.
I will actually ask, because I'm a member of that church, and this has been a bee in my bonnet for so long, if Mr. Dunn could work with Mr. Chapdeline and Attorney Heim, and if it is appropriate, I would love for it to be, I don't think I have any, in terms of tonight discussing it, have any conflict, because I derive no financial, but just for process sake, if it is an agenda item, Mr. Dunn as vice chair, but then acting chair. So I'm going to let you follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay. And thank you, I've always wanted to bring it up, but it seemed so self-serving, I know who sent the letter. Any other new business?
Nope.